Everybody please rise for the Pledgeable Agents. Josh, would you lead us?
The Pledgeable Agent is a good flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
And the approval of minutes of 21720, if everybody take a look. There's no omissions, errors, or corrections, we'll entertain a motion. Lorick moves to approve the minutes of 21720.
Gudzakowski, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Stays.
Item four is a resolution of appreciation to Ronald Pejora, retiring police sergeant. Catherine, would you please read that one to record?
Certainly, resolution number 12138030320, resolution of appreciation to Ronald P. Pejota. Whereas Ronald P. Pejota began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on January 18th, 1993 as a full-time police officer, and whereas during his 27 years and one month of service, Ron Pejota has been an integral part of the Police Department while serving as a patrol officer early in his career, then rising to the rank of sergeant, and whereas Ron Pejota has had a history of service while also serving the United States in the Air Force Reserve 440th Tactical Air Lift Wing from 1985 through 1995, and whereas Ron Pejota has continued to serve the citizens of Oak Creek with honor and professionalism, and whereas Ron Pejota has served in numerous specialty units in addition to his normal duties throughout his career to include Crime Prevention, Court Liaison, Honor Guard, Emergency Response Unit, Career Survival Unit, Police Motorcycle Unit, Policy Review, Crisis Intervention Unit, Field Training Officer, Auxiliary Unit Supervisor, Recruitment Team, Municipal Jail Administrator, Juvenile Unit, and Coordinator for National Night Out. And whereas Ron Pejota has served on the Department's Honor Guard Unit from 1996 until retirement, during this service, Pejota served as a team leader and helped to establish the Honor Guard Unit as one of the model units in the state of Wisconsin. During this time, Pejota also assisted in the training of numerous members of the Honor Guard community, and whereas Ron Pejota has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been well-known for his worth ethic and his dedication to the department, and whereas Ron Pejota received four shift acknowledgements, four attendance awards, four unit citations, one award of excellence, and one award for outstanding achievement for National Night Out, and was named the 2002 Police Officer of the Year by Oak Creek American Legion Post 434. And whereas Ron Pejota is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 27 years and one month of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek, now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, the sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Ronald P. Pejota for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the Police Department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Ronald P. Pejota and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Ronald P. Pejota, passed and adopted this third day of March 2020.
Thank you Catherine. Chief Anderson, would you like to say a few words about your officer, your retired officer?
Steve Anderson from the Police Department. Sergeant Pejota actually planned on being here today and already had a commitment for tonight, so he's out of town, but he wanted to be here to thank the council. He enjoyed his years of service, we had a great going away ceremony for him, very well-attended. Ron has done a great job and has a history of service. His dad was a Milwaukee police officer, his son is serving in the military now, so the whole family has that. Ron did a very good job representing all of us with the community, and he wanted me to express his gratitude for the city for his years as well.
Thank you Chief. Council members, anybody'd like to say anything on Ron's behalf?
Okay, just very quickly, I had the privilege of attending the retirement ceremony for Ron. It was a crowded room for him. Obviously, it showed what he meant to the department. One thing that wasn't mentioned that really showed was what a mentor he was to younger officers and officers he had served with. The list is long as to what he did. He accomplished a lot in 27 years for the City of Oak Creek, and he will be missed but not forgotten, so we wish him a very long and happy retirement.
Motion please.
Thank you Mayor. Gale, move to approve resolution number 12138030320, resolution of appreciation to Ronald P. Pejota, retiring police sergeant.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item five is a congratulations proclamation to Joshua Rich for receiving his Eagle Scout Award. Catherine, would you read that one?
Certainly, council proclamation number 2002, congratulations to Joshua Rich for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, and whereas such award is an earned award that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award, and whereas less than 4% of all Scouts actually achieve this goal. And whereas at a court of honor, an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Joshua Rich, and whereas his Eagle project, Joshua worked with the Salvation Army to renovate their monument sign, putting in a new LED digital display. And whereas Joshua Rich, with the help of local companies, Everbright Adaptive Display Solutions, Wellcraft, and CreateScape Landscaping Service Inc., and many fundraising efforts, raised in excess of $32,000 to cover the material costs necessary for his Eagle project. And whereas Joshua Rich worked with other Scouts removing old brick and installing a new landscaping ring, and whereas after 500 man-hours of work and a year and a half to complete, replacing the defective sign has provided the Salvation Army a means to promote events and opportunities to and for the community. And whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Joshua Rich, now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Joshua Rich for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Joshua Rich, dated this third day of March 2020.
Thank you Catherine. Anybody have anything to say about Joshua being Eagle Scout? Chris?
Yes Mayor, I just want to mention that I had the opportunity to, I was invited to go over to the Salvation Army, and they were showing the highlights of all the work he did on the sign and all of the people that he had convinced to work together on this project. The list is long, and the work is really pretty impressive when you look at the number of hours and collaboration he had throughout the whole project from all aspects of business and cities, so he learned a lot, and it was really appreciative that I was invited for that.
Well said Rich. These Eagle Scouts have to pick their projects, lay them out, he found a worthwhile endeavor with Salvation Army, a great group here in the city. I think the numbers speak for itself. Raised over $32,000, coordinated 500 man-hours worth of work. This is a future leader, and Oak Creek's proud to call him his own, so congratulations to him, and hopefully I'll be able to make his ceremony when the time comes.
Motion on five please.
Gale, move to approve council proclamation 2002, congratulations to Joshua Rich for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
The next four proclamations have to do with the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce Dinner that we attended about a week or so ago, and we have some congratulations to the winners. Catherine, if you would just kind of give us an idea of who received what?
Certainly. The first award for the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce 2019 Annual Awards was Rock Ventures. They are the Pride and Premise Award winner. These four proclamations were presented to the winners on February 20th, 2020. Rock Ventures was chosen for their work on the Ballpark Commons Development and the Rock Sports Complex.
Should we get a motion on these separately? No, we don't. Okay, thank you.
The next award went to Pixology as the 2019 Business of the Year Award winner. After six years of service, they have produced over 1 million photos saved for their clients, and their clients have started calling them the Pixologist, so congratulations to them. The next winner was Doug Milanovich, who is the 2019 Member of the Year Award winner. This award was based on their contributions to the South Suburban Communities, their organizations, and its youth. And the last award was to Grunow Company, 2019 Business of the Award winner. The Grunow Company strives to keep its customers happy and also serves their community. They were very supportive of many of the organizations that are local here in Oak Creek area, so congratulations to them.
And Doug?
And if I may, very interesting to note that Grunow is celebrating their 100th year this year, and it's good to see that the two Businesses of the Year, the large business and the small business were both from Oak Creek, so congratulations to all the winners.
That's a great, great point Doug. And again, Rock Ventures, beautiful development up there in Franklin. It's just great, and again Doug, well deserved on his part, so congratulations to all.
Item 10, an ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the Municipal Code and adopt the Comprehensive Plan for the City of Oak Creek. Just as a note, this was held on 2420 and 21720 so that we may put some more time into it, so. Doug, you want to get some synopsis on it?
Just very, very briefly, because you all have had a chance to review the plan, and we sent out links for some of the revisions. I mean, the plan that was held on February 4th was taken back and based on some comments that we did receive from some of the Aldermen. We did make some revisions to that, and I would characterize most of the comments as, not really stylistic in nature, but it was really changing some of the language from the city shall to the city may, and encouraging certain things, certainly the aspirational items of the plan. There are a few things, some good catches in there with respect to open space percentages that would have been impactful upon some of our businesses, so I'm glad we kind of caught those. I know that Alderman Gale, as the generator of some of those comments, wanted to bring to your attention some of the other things that he noticed as part of his review of the plan, be happy to discuss those, and a lot of the things that were mentioned and based on the review that we had that we felt didn't really materially affect the plan, and some verbiage changes we've made to the plan that you have before this evening. The items that maybe brought up this evening, we'd certainly encourage the council to have a discussion on those, and we just want to make sure that the plan is a reflection of the entire council, the entire planning commission, and the stakeholder groups, the focus groups, all the citizens who took part in that. I think the additional time that we spent on this is well worth the effort and the time, and hopeful that we can get a comprehensive plan adopted this evening.
Thank you Doug. Comments? Buddy?
Thanks Mayor. I just want to state my appreciation to Doug and Kerry and the rest of the group and the consultants for persevering through the process. I know it's been a long haul to get this thing to the point where it's at right now. The kind of the last time through the mill, I think we've got this document in a place where the community can be very proud of it, the document we're going to have that will help us, guide us for the next two decades in our planning provisions. It'll stand in good stead with our strategic plan in terms of guiding this community forward, and I'm very happy to offer my support to approve it and move it forward tonight.
Ben?
Chris?
I was just going to mention Mayor, that this plan is well thought out when you look at all of the information that's here. It takes a long time to read it, so we had a good opportunity to do that, but it also helps everyone with planning, with planning commission for sure, rolling this out and moving forward. It helps everyone else's jobs going down the line, so I think this is a good move from everything that we've got, so that's our home base here.
Yes, I'm just going to add a little redundant, but again, thank the staff, this was over a year's worth of work going into this, a lot of community input at different events throughout the year. I ran into some citizens, one of the biggest misconceptions of this is that we were rezoning land with this for designated use, that really wasn't it. It was for a future land use consideration. This is kind of the roadmap, as President Gale said, it's going to lay things out for the next two decades, but flexibility is built into it because nobody's for sure what the next 20 years is going to bring.
If no other questions or statements, motion on 10 please.
Gale, move to approve ordinance 2963, an ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the Municipal Code to adopt the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Oak Creek.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 11 is consideration of a motion to approve a plan of finance for $5,75,000 of refunding bonds per the approved TID 11, and that is a City Emerald Row Phase 2 and 3 Development Agreement. Andrew?
So Mayor, I'll take this one in Bridget's absence this evening. Before I introduce, reintroduce Justin Fisher with Barrett, our consultant for these types of bond issuances, I just wanted to briefly mention for the viewing public and as well as the folks in the audience, the next four items are all plans of finance, and the first plan of finance is for project costs related to the Emerald Row Phase 2 and 3 Development Agreement. The second one is the project costs associated with the Ryan Business Park. As stated in the staff report, those are other park remainder site costs, not necessarily specific to the Amazon project. The third is for the Phase 1 Stand Rock Hospitality Hotel and Conference and Events Center Development, and then the last one is $835,000 for project costs associated with the Zune Construction. All four of these plans of finance are funded through tax increment financing mechanisms, not the general taxpayers, general tax base of the city, I think that's important to reiterate for those kind of viewing from afar. And if it pleases you Mayor, what I'd like to do, we do have individual motions required on all of these plans of finance, but if we could kind of just give Justin the floor for a period of time to kind of go through all of them, it might be a little more efficient use of our time.
So with that, Justin? Thank you, thank you for having me here tonight. As Andrew kind of mentioned, there's a few items to talk about, so in the presentation packet that I handed out, it's all in there, so that's what I'll go through tonight. Before I start, I'll give you a quick update on what's been going on in the municipal bond interest rate world. As you are all aware, the coronavirus has really taken over not only the stock market but also the bond market. The more fear that's out there with what's going to be happening with the economy and so forth, there really is a flight to safety, and what does that mean? People are potentially getting out of the stock market and purchasing bonds, a little bit safer investment, and one of the safest investments out there is municipal bonds. So we're seeing interest rates drop pretty dramatically over the last month, and the stock market, you can see, it's been down the last week, and then we saw that large increase yesterday, so it's probably going to continue to be very volatile for the foreseeable future until there's more stability with the coronavirus and what's going to happen with the economy. So that bodes well for you being the municipal issuer of these bonds, it doesn't really bode well for many people on their retirement accounts, but like I said, from an issuing standpoint, it couldn't be a better time to be entering the market. I'll go through the timeline, we'll talk about the plan of finance, and then I'll just briefly talk about the detailed financing illustrations for each one of the projects. So if you flip to page 2 of the presentation, the timeline is really tonight to consider the plan of finance that we talk about. There really is going to be three series of bond issues that are going to be considered with four different projects being kind of the focus of the three different series. On March 17th, that's when we will enter the bond market and lock in the interest rates, and City Council will consider the award resolutions for the borrowings, and then the closings will take place April 1st of 2020. The payoff of the 2019 note related to TID number 16, that will happen on April 20th, which is basically about 30 days from when we lock in the interest rates on March 17th, because there is a 30-day call notice, so that's what that is. So at the bottom, you can see we laid it out for each one of the series of bonds, the first one being in the amount of roughly $5,170,000. This is going to be a taxable GO promissory note related to the TID number 16, Amazon Development Area. TID number 12, the Stand Rock Development Area. And the structure for this is April 1, 2021 to 2023, with the first interest payment being April 1, 2021, and a call feature being April 1, 2022. And we'll talk about why that's set up that way when we get to the detailed illustrations. The estimated interest rate is 2.73%, that's extremely conservative. This hasn't been updated as far as interest rates for a few weeks, and so we should come in much better in the next couple of weeks. The next one is $835,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes related to TID number 11, the Zune Development Area. The structure being October 1, 2021 to 2029, with the first interest payment being next year, April 1, 2021. Call feature will be determined as we get closer to the bond sale, and the estimated interest rate for that 10-year financing is 3.09%. The final series of bonds will be $5,75,000 taxable GO refunding bonds related to TID number 11, the Emerald Row Phase 2 Development Area. October 1, 2021 to 2032, with the first interest payment being April 1, 2021, and the estimated interest rate again being 3.24%. All very conservative interest rates, I expect it to come in much better at the time of sale. So going to page 3, this is the Amazon Development Area. As you look from the left side of the page to the right side of the page, that's really how to look at this, with the left side being the revenues associated with this development, the TID project, and really with the tax revenues coming in in 2021, you can see that's where the majority of revenues start hitting, and so that's why we're structuring the debt really to focus on not having any type of payments in 2020 but hitting in 2021, and because of the type of revenue that's going to be coming in, there's the ability to pay off that debt faster. You know, instead of taking it out longer and paying more in interest cost, trying to pay off that debt as fast as we can, but also at the same point being strategic about it, not going too aggressive.
Justin, if I may jump in quickly, the revenues from the project, obviously the only one generating tax increment in that district so far is the Amazon Development itself. I recently, very recently, updated the council with regards to potential valuation for that project, so if you could just share, you know, we went back and forth on what we were estimating that value to be very conservatively to yield those revenues, was that 70 or 80 million?
It was $70 million is what we use for the revenue projections now. That could change, but I guess you tell me, is that still a good projection to use at this point?
It happens to be a little light, we're going to be coming in a much more favorable in terms of overall assessed valuation for that project, but I think the plan of finance can remain because we're still looking at that shorter-term notes.
Yep, so trying to be conservative in our approach with this development project. Going to page 4 of the presentation. So this is related to Stand Rock Development and TID number 12. Left side of the page, that's the projected revenues related to this project. With the revenues really hitting in 2023, we looked at it as a short-term financing to get you the funds for this project and really have capitalized interest, so there isn't any necessary debt payments related to it, because there isn't going to be any revenues related to this project for a few years. In 2022, when there's a call feature in this debt, that's when we'll look at refinancing and restructuring it based on making sure that development hit the assessed value that it's required, and really go from there. So that's why the short-term financing is put in place right now. Going to page 5, this talks about TIF number 11, the Zune Development. Left side of the page, again, 2021 is when the majority of tax revenue is going to start hitting, and so we have the ability to do the 10-year financing now with the first payment being next year, kind of line it up so it coincides with the revenues and the expenditures, and leave it a little bit left for safety as well. And then page 6, this is the final project pro forma. Left side of the page, again, revenues coming in in 2021 related to the Emerald Row Phase 2 Development Project, and we're timing it so the first payment on these bonds is going to hit in 2021 to coincide with those revenues, and really take it out for the full life of that TIF, which should leave about $300,000 to $500,000 in excess revenue for other expenditures. The last page, this is more for council to just kind of see how things are developing within the city as far as borrowing goes. When, at the end of 2019, the city had approximately 48% bonding capacity available. After these borrowings in 2020, you take into account these three series of borrowings, there's going to be over 50%, so you're actually increasing your capacity from last year to this year, even though you're borrowing, and that's because the city is being very prudent about paying off debt, as well as, you know, seeing the growth from the development of these type of projects. So even though there has been some borrowing associated with these things, your capacity has actually increased year over year, which is a great thing to see.
Questions for Justin? Comments? No, pretty impressive. I feel pretty comfortable with that report.
Good.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you Justin.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we'll take those motions one at a time, and those concerned 12 through, oh, sorry, 11 through 14.
Thank you Mayor. Gale, move to approve the plan of finance for $5,75,000 of refunding bonds per the approved TID 11 City Emerald Row Phase 2 and 3 Development Agreement.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Motion on 12 please.
Gale, move to approve the plan of finance for $2,905,000 of TID 16 project costs related to the Ryan Business Park.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 13?
Gale, move to approve the plan of finance for $2,265,000 of project costs related to TID 12 Stand Rock Hospitality Development.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
14?
Finally Gale, move to approve the plan of finance for $835,000 of GO promissory notes for the Zune, per the approved TID 11 City/Zune Development Agreement.
Gudzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Gudzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 15 is an informational, it's a summarized treasurer's report for the month ending January 31st, 2020, and Barb's with us tonight. Barb?
Thank you Mayor. So the Treasury Report on Investment Banking for the month ending January 31st, 2020. Our beginning balance was $73,786,815.05. Ending balance, $69,416,946.62. Interest earned, $98,864.59. Balance change from beginning to end was a decrease of $4,369,868.43. Some of the larger activity for January, we had tax collection of just under $23.2 million, or about 26.6%. City share of that was about $8.3 million, and we did have to pay out the December tax settlement in January of about $28.99. settlement in January of about $28.9 million.
Questions for Barb? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 16. Sorry, I lost track of where I was. Consideration of a resolution setting a date and time for the 2020 Board of Review.
This is a routine item. We need to bring a resolution to yourselves to set the Board of Review date for 2020. The timeline has been determined. I believe the roll will be available on March 31st for public viewing, and a statutory meeting will take place on May 18th, Monday, at 5:15 PM. The assessment roll will not be ready at that time, so we will move to adjourn till June of 2020 will be our first night of hearings for the Board of Review.
Thank you, Catherine. Questions, comments for Catherine? Seeing none, motion please. Catherine.
Oh, I should note, in the resolution, there is a correction of, we're meeting at 5:15 on Monday. Typically, we meet at 5:30 for the statutory meeting. We needed to move that to 5:15 to accommodate, the school board has meetings in this room. So it's noted 5:30 in the resolution, and that will be corrected.
All right, Gil, move to approve the resolution 12143-03, 030320, setting the date and time for the 2020 Board of Review per the correction noted by the clerk.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Item 17 concerns the water and sewer utility in its consideration of a resolution approving a sanitary sewer easement at the property at 6508 South Howell Avenue. And Brian Johnston's with us from the utility. Hey, Brian.
Good evening. So the first easement here is for the Jewel Sanitary Sewer Project. So this is the project that is eliminating the lift station on the end of Burrell and Jewel Street. This easement will run north across the Stromowski Heating Property and continue on up to College. So the lift station goes away and gravity sewer being served from Jewel all the way up to College.
Okay, questions for Brian?
Steve? I just want to thank Brian and Mike for their time and working this out. There was just a little small hiccup with the property owner, and we sat down for a quick meeting, and then they worked it out. So again, it's just an example that when sometimes things, you know, you get a cog in a system and you sit down and you talk to people, you can, you can work these things out and, and things move forward that way. So thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Very good, and this is a long time coming, this is a needed area, so this should improve things. All right, motion?
Kurkowski, make a motion, approve resolution number 12134-030320, approving a sanitary sewer easement at 6508 South Howell Avenue, project number 17106.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 18 is consideration of a resolution approving a water main easement at 150 East Oakwood Road. Brian?
This is a water main looping project to serve Quail Run. So we have 78 homes that are served off a water main off of 13th Street. So this will give them a secondary loop into that subdivision in case there's something that happened out on 13th Street, improve their water quality and fire protection for that subdivision. We had to acquire this easement from this property owner in order to extend that down from the end of Quail Run down to Oakwood Road. Cornerstone One is going to be the contractor for this. This work should be happening sometime this spring.
Thank you. Questions for Brian? None? Okay, motion on 18.
Thank you, Mayor. Gil will move to approve resolution 12135-030320, approving a water main easement at 150 East Oakwood Road.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 19 is consideration of a resolution vacating the existing sanitary easement and approving a sanitary easement at 6448 South Howell Avenue. Brian?
This is back to the Jewel Sanitary Sewer Project, and like Alderman Kurkowski said, we had some issues with the property owner to the south. We had to do a redesign to meet up with the property. So we had to vacate the easement that was already established for the, this property and create a new easement. We got through that, got this taken care of, and negotiated the easement with them, so.
Great. Questions, comments, Steve?
Oh, just like I said before.
Okay. Motion?
Kurkowski, make a motion, approve resolution number 12136-030320, vacating the existing sanitary easement and approving a sanitary easement at 6448 South Howell Avenue, project number 17106.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
And item 20 is consideration of a resolution requesting Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District Program and install a regional interceptor sewer in the 27th Street from Oakwood Road to County Line Road. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This project involves requesting of MMSD or showing our support for the installation of this MMSD interceptor sewer, regional sewer that would collect those flows from Caledonia, Raymond, in the future Franklin and Oak Creek. And it's showing support with all the communities Franklin has done, so Caledonia is working on that, Raymond will as well when they join the district, asking MMSD to invest in Oak Creek on that portion where we need an interceptor sewer to open up some of our lands for development.
All right, questions for Mike? Now, I think Mike kind of spelled it out, this is a regional benefit for everybody with this, as well as MMSD. It'll improve everything, so. All right, motion on 20.
Guzakowski makes a motion, council accepts resolution number 12137030320, requesting Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District Program and install a regional interceptor sewer in 27th Street from, in 27th Street from Oakwood Road to County Line.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 21 is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Walden OC LLC for the properties at 1920, 1900, 1850, 1848, 1816, 1800, 1750, and 1700 West Drexel Avenue, and 7700 South IKEA Way.
Thank you, Mayor. This certified survey map is the line of vision document that will set the stage for the development of the Creekside Crossing Marketplace, a destination retail development just south of IKEA, between IKEA Way and the freeway north of Drexel Avenue. The CSM itself creates a number of lots. Lot 2 is for the Stand Rock Development consisting of the Hotel and Conference Center that was just recently approved by the Plan Commission. Lot 3 is the larger remainder of the parcel that would be for additional development, as with Lot 4 and Lot 1. As part of the CSM, the right-of-way is being dedicated for Creekside Crossing Marketplace, and accompanying this, the future council action will be actually a development agreement which implements the, and designs the right-of-way and sets the standards for development of that public street.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug? Seeing none, no. Again, we went through this at planning, it was covered pretty well there. It also allows for cross-easement access, correct? Between properties, so it's a well-thought-out plan as these properties start to change and become what they're going to be. No further questions? Motion, please.
Lorik moves that the council adopt resolution number 12144-030320, a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Walden OC LLC for the properties at 1920, 1900, 1850, 1848, 1816, 1800, 1750, and 1700 West Drexel Avenue, and 7700 South IKEA Way.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Item 22 is engineering in its consideration of a resolution approving Hub 13 Development Agreement with Wingspan Development Group LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 7581 South 13th Street. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Hub 13 Development, the large apartment development that is planned for 7581 South 13th Street. And this development agreement is required for developments of this nature to outline the responsibilities and the design and construction requirements for generally all the public infrastructure that's associated with the development. In this particular development, that would be the public water main, it would be public improvements to 13th Street. They need to do some improvements such as sidewalk fronting the property and some modifications to, for safe turning movements into the development. Also, there is private interceptor sewer. While it is private, it does need to be designed and constructed and approved through all the normal channels that public sensor sewer would be required to. And then the agreement has the general language for the grading and roars control requirements. Also outlines that there will be inspection of the construction as it proceeds on these specific items, and that the developer is responsible for the costs associated with
Questions for Mike concerning the development? Seeing none, motion?
Kurkowski, make a motion, the council adopt resolution number 12142-030320, approving the Hub 13 Development Agreement with Wingspan Development Group LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 7581 South 13th Street.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 23 is the License Committee, and I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kurkowski at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust that members of the council have had an opportunity to review the License Committee report that was in the agenda packet tonight. Does anybody have any questions regarding that report? Seeing none, Kurkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the March 3, 2020 License Committee Report.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 24 is our vendor summary report for the date February 26, 2020. Would everybody please take a look, and if there's any questions, we'll take it to the
Mr. Mayor, I might draw your attention to one because I think it's a positive story, number, item number 12. That item is actually, the majority of that is for a DPW garage swapping out of LED bulbs in the garage part of the facility out there. That's actually going to be grant, partially grant funded by Focus on Energy, but Dick reports that it's just a little over a one-year payback on that, and we'll have those savings in electricity costs, so.
Right.
That's a good, good story, good initiative on his part to.
Very good.
To track that down.
There's actually a few cost savings here, the brine system cabinets on there, which projected to save us salt and a lot of work at DPW as well.
Item number 13, Doug. Zoning code update, is that the follow-up for?
Yeah, that's actually, we've kind of been overlapping a little bit. We've started working, preparing the update to this, pretty significant update to the zoning code, which is actually older than the comprehensive plan was. The most recent iteration was probably 1995, so long overdue, and while it serves to implement the comprehensive plan, it's not the only reason we're doing it. Obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to bring it up to statutory standards for the state, as well as just, you know, bringing it into the 2020s now, and where the city finds itself these days is a lot different than it was in 1995.
Or we had a?
Just kind of started it, so we're probably in the kind of discovery phase right now, and as we move forward, we'll have a very similar public participation element in terms of trying to get a good fit for the community, not just, it's not going to be cut and paste from somebody else's codebook. I think that's what we did back in 95, and it didn't serve us all that well. So it's really from a ground up, a pretty major overhaul.
Any other questions? Seeing none, motion?
Gil, move to approve the February 26, 2020 Vendor Summary Report in the combined total amount of $884,889.69.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
And that will get us to adjournment.
Kurkowski, make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gil.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Toman.
All right, thank you all for tuning in or coming out tonight, appreciate it.